I'd like to call tonight's Des Moines Regular City Council meeting to order for September 13th, 2018, and will Councilmember Beck please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please let the record show that all councilmembers are present. Okay, is there any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take comments from the public. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and the city in which you live. You will have three minutes to speak. The first folks we have signed up, there's actually two people, Natalie and Lila Nutting.
Um, I'm Natalie.
And I'm Lila.
Um, we live in the city of Des Moines, and we're here to give the update on our third annual Lemonade Stand fundraiser for the Police Foundation Shop of the Cup event. We raised, drumroll please, $1,587.91. We would like to thank the police officers, firefighters, and the community for coming out and supporting us. Thank you.
Good job, girls.
Nice job. That is just amazing. How many lemons did you go through? Never mind. Just kidding. Next person is Jon Stewart.
Hi, my name is Jon Stewart. I live in Seattle, and as part of my job, I'm in Des Moines a few times a month. Recently, I got two citations for running a photo-enforced red light within about a month of each other and from the same location, which was the westbound right-turn slip lane on Kent Des Moines Road at the intersection with SR 99. I have had a clean driving record with no other tickets for many years, so I wonder what might be special about that location. Well, quite a lot, as it turns out. According to the Photo Enforcement Program's annual report for 2017, that location generated 24,443 citations, which is more than double the combined total from the city's other photo-enforced lights. At $136 a pop, that's some $3,300,000 per year, potentially for profits to the red-light camera company and to the city coffers. These numbers are outrageous and should in themselves be a red flag, that this is an illegitimate use of a red-light camera. But there's more. The light does not contribute to traffic safety in any way. It is in a weird spot, and the setup is deceptive. This is a stoplight in a slip lane. That is one of those curved lanes that you take for a right turn so that you don't have to stop at the intersection unless there's cross-traffic. People typically expect at most a yield sign, not a red light, and this location actually seems unusually safe because visibility to the left is excellent, and you don't have to merge immediately because there's a bus lane as a buffer. Also, for about a third of the duration of the red light, there is no way there could be any cross-traffic and therefore no chance of an accident. The safety of this slip lane is borne out by the same 2017 report, which tells us that the 24,000-plus drivers running this red light caused exactly zero accidents. In summary, this is an illegitimate use of photo enforcement with no redeeming public safety function. I'd like to see the city replace this red light with a simple yield sign, and I realize that removing this camera is not a trivial request since it will probably blow a big hole in the city budget. But relying on what is essentially an arbitrary, hidden, regressive tax is not, in my view, a good way to fund city government, and I'm sure the city of Des Moines does not want to be known as the home of one of the world's worst red-light cameras.
Thank you. Barbara McMichael?
Good evening. My name is Barbara McMichael. I'm a resident of Des Moines. I work for Sococulture, which is a short name for the South King County Cultural Coalition. We're an umbrella organization of arts and heritage and botanical groups throughout South King County, and we are funded by For Culture, which you all probably know is the cultural services agency of King County. Okay, so, some of our botanical groups and historical societies, Sococulture is all about helping people collaborate and professional development and networking, and some of our historical societies started talking with some of our botanical gardens and, you know, contacted me and, "What can I do for you?", and they wanted to be talking more about trees as one of South King County's cultural resources. And certainly, we've had so much in the way of development pressures that we've been losing a lot of trees. My husband just sent me an article from Mother Jones that said 36 million trees disappear every year, every year, from urban environments across the United States, and I think we're seeing it right here in Des Moines, in Seattle, throughout the Puget Sound region as well. So, we're trying to do something proactive and constructive and not be crusty complainers, but do something, you know, that will help people think more about the value of trees and what we can do to preserve more of them and to plant more of them and so on. So, we have two things going on on our website. Number one, we have a Forest for the Trees crowdsourced map of culturally significant trees. I know this is all a mouthful, but what you can do is go online to our Sococulture website, sococulture.org, and in the banner on the top, there's a little thing that says Trees. Click on that, and that will take you to the map, and you can add a photograph of a tree that is important to you for whatever reason. Could be your grandpa planted it, could be you just like it when you drive by every day. It really doesn't matter the reason why, but give a little story about it, provide a photograph, and we have, right now, we have probably about 80 or 90 trees. I am going to every city council in South King County, and I am challenging city councils to encourage their citizens and themselves to take it upon themselves to add trees. Right now, Des Moines has about four trees. Thank you, Councilmember Buxton, because she has provided one of them, I know. Great stories behind some of these trees, and so we'd love you to know about that and participate in that. Second thing is, I sent you a flyer last week. We got a Port of Seattle funding to do a three-part series on, we're calling it our Engaging Trees Speaker Series, and the first program is next Wednesday, right at, it's being hosted by the Des Moines Historical Society at Des Moines Oddfellows Hall, and it's going to be a cultural, it's going to be a four-person panel on the cultural value of trees. We have the great, 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 great grandson of Chief Seattle, who will be speaking, and we have an artist born and raised, and two other really great people, and so I hope that you'll be able to come to that event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara, I'd like to make a comment to you over here, that you may be aware, but city's working with Forterra on an urban canopy master plan, and then also initiated a Tree in Lufy regarding development that takes out trees so we can replace those trees and put them into some type of, you know, manner that represents an appropriate urban canopy for the city. So, we really applaud your efforts and wanted you to know we're engaged with Forterra in this.
The next person is Jennifer Johnson.
Hello. I'm here because of a year ago, the events that happened in Des Moines. A police chase with my boyfriend, Paul Grip, that went to fife. Mixed stories. They say he was shot or he shot himself. Confusion still because there's two counties involved and two police reports and all kinds of guns, and this is a year anniversary, though, of it. It happened like Thursday night at 2:30 in the morning, September 15th, last year. And I've been paying really a lot of attention to Des Moines ever since then, and especially since the four people from the city came. The Harbor Master, a uniform officer, which I think was Chief Boyle, Michael Mathias and Vic Pennington, who I did not know at that time around the city council, but these four gentlemen came 12 hours after Paul was shot and killed and wanted me to get off our boat, our yacht that we'd been having for two and a half years. It was parked at the Gessmoreage in Des Moines. They should have told the family it was a probate issue, but instead, they came and they bullied me. I got on my hands and knees and begged them. Do you remember that, Mr. Mathias, and do you, Vic?
Well, just to set the record straight, I wasn't there in either one of my capacities at your end.
Your middle? Okay, well. Looked just like you. Anyways, for sure, do you remember that, Ben? Were you there?
I recall, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do recall your characterization of it. I do recall.
Okay, so, let's get somebody to go there. So, um, I think it's disgusting that the city bullied me and violated my laws because I was a victim of domestic violence. And like I said, I've been paying a lot of attention to you, and this whole thing about downloading from the city server and all these things I found out about your budget, and there's not enough time to talk about it all in a few minutes, so I want you to know I'm having a press conference soon, and I've already been talking to a couple of different reporters and investigators and figuring out things, and that's why I wanted to tell the whole city, as the city council and the whole city of Des Moines. You should be proud, you said, for your standard and pores. Was that you that said that, right? During the standard and pores, you should be proud of the city, right? Okay, well, we'll see if you're proud after my press conference. Thank you.
Mr. J.C. Harris.
Wow, this is the most interesting public comment I've been to in quite some time. So, I got a call from a buddy of mine in South Carolina yesterday, and I was thinking about that emergency readiness, and if you've been looking at the scorecard recently, we are not doing very well in this early phase of the game with the Port of Seattle and the airport expansion. Most of the efforts that we have made have not really garnered any positive results. The thing I want to mention briefly is that while we are dealing reactively with expansion 4B, it's well to know that expansion 4, or 4A, pardon me, now, it's well to know that expansion 4B is already being planned. The thing that hit me is that the very laws designed to protect us, NEPA and SEPA and so forth, force the port to put into place elaborate and really good infrastructure to oppose anyone who doesn't like their plans. They already have lawyers, analysts, engineers, scientists, people who've been on staff since before the Third Runway. They are ready to go any day of the week to handle anything that may come up. We don't have that kind of flexibility or any ability to respond. We don't have the manpower, we don't have the expertise, we don't have even the record-keeping. Something basic like having the infrastructure on the city's networks where you can bring up the kind of information that you would need quickly, it simply doesn't exist. And so, I'm just going to suggest to you that while you are spending all this money on the consultant group and on this, these, the impact proviso thing, which is getting watered down, and the UW study, which is getting watered down, and so on, it would be well to consider putting into place the things you're going to need five years from now. It's going to be money far well spent. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the, excuse me, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council that did not sign up to speak? Okay, seeing no one approach, this takes us forward to board and committee reports and councilmember comments, and tonight, we will start with Councilmember Beck.
I had kind of a busy week, so Monday, I did go to the SAMP presentation at Highline College. A lot of whiteboards with nothing written on them, and there were a lot of port representatives there, and I don't fault them because they were there doing their job just to answer questions, but unfortunately, there weren't any policy decision-makers there, so, but the biggest comment I heard is just the frustration that the Port of Seattle won't engage in a town hall format here in Des Moines, so I just want to echo that. I do want to thank Steve Edmiston for actually making a list of grievances. I just saw that on the Waterline Blog this morning, and I thought he presented himself very well, but anyway, I did make that. Tuesday, Councilmember Bangs and myself went to the September 11 memorial at the South King County Fire Station in Federal Way on South 320th, and I'd been to a couple of them before, but I never actually looked at the memorial itself that close until this last time, and it's moving, and one of the keynote speakers did really highlight the fact of how many first responders had given their lives that day, and we just have to be so thankful for police, fire, first responders, medics, everybody that are sacrificing their lives and putting their lives on the line when crisis and emergencies happen, so I just wanted to say thank you to them. The memorial itself is kind of cool, though. There's this big 2,200-pound piece of I-beam that was actually brought here from New York, and it was one of the, a piece from one of the Twin Towers, and Councilmember Pennington explained that that I-beam, the way it's mounted, it's actually kind of at a trajectory. It looks like a sundial, the way it's mounted, but it's just adjacent to the list of victims. But the way it's mounted, it's actually, I don't know if you said it was by GPS, but it's technically pointed directly toward New York, at New York City, which I just appreciate the engineering and the forethought that went into planning that memorial. Yesterday, Wednesday, I intended to go attend the Coffee with a Cop at Wesley, and the cops were there, but most of Wesley was at the Puyallup Fair. They took a few busloads to the fair, and so we had our men in blue, a great presence there. Councilmember Bangs and I were there, but hardly any seniors, and so, but there was one senior that was asking the next time when they do do, oh, and the reason this happened is there was a scheduling quirk with Wesley. It wasn't our fault, but one of the seniors did ask, "The next time we do it, they'd like to get some video footage so they can do an episode of Cops at Wesley." What you gonna do when they come for you? Anyway, tonight, we had an environment committee meeting, and I will let Councilmember Buxton refer to that as the chair, and the last point is, this coming Saturday, the SCORE Jail is doing an annual open house. This is where they present the awards to outstanding employees and people who've had some tenure there, but this is a good time if you've never been to the jail and you want to tour. The tours begin at 3 o'clock, there's a dinner at 4, and then the award presentation starts at 5, and I've been going to every one of those every year since I've been on the council, and it's well worth it. So, if you want more information on that, please let me know, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bangs?
So, just to dovetail here, the memorial that was set up for the 9/11 victims, they're, it is moving in general, but they also had a rock or a brick from the Pentagon when, there as well, and then an actual rock from where Flight 93, they all made that decision to save lives, and they killed, had themselves killed in that event, and so there was an actual rock from that field there. But there's also a tree, which I didn't quite understand, but there's a tree there, a pear tree, that was one surviving.
It's the only tree that survived 9/11, so this tree is planted there to represent that.
I mean.
There's also a pair of Army boots from
Right.
An actual firefighter that served in the Middle East.
So, all of these things that we, I mean, I know there's a lot of things that go on in Des Moines. We heard, we heard some of these things, right? We heard some very personal things, and we heard some things that no one will ever be satisfied with, no matter what we do, but there are bigger things in life that we really have to pay attention to. Trees are absolutely, I totally agree with you, right? There's a special on PBS right now about the rainforest in the Amazon. We know what's going on, but there are these other things we don't take enough time to really go and just absorb, and so those are some of the things that I think I will definitely make sure I'm aware of every year and everyone is aware of every year. There's a lot going on, but I just wanted to mention, there's just a lot there at that memorial, and we're encouraged to go at night as well because it's lit up in a way that is probably very heart-wrenching, so first responders, wow, we can't thank them enough. I attended the Arts Commission meeting on Monday evening with Susan Caesar. Lots going on, Sculpture Walk on the 16th, 11 o'clock a.m. at the library, please meet there if you want to go. We have on the 21st, the gala, which I'm excited about. October 6th is the Art and Wine Walk. A lot of things going on. Please feel free to go onto the website for the activities that are being planned by the Arts Commission. There, yes, we did attend the Coffee with a Cop, but there's another one, I think, scheduled in a couple of weeks. Yes. Let's see, Farmer's Market this Saturday. I attended the ad hoc franchise committee meeting, a number of things we went over, recycling update, there'll be more information on that as time goes on. Of course, we are all aware that, you know, these tariffs with China and things that are going on with our government and them may cause us to feel some, I won't say pain, but we may see some increases, so there's more to come on that. Verizon small cell franchise application, city attorney and staff are working through that agreement. Let's see, and then I think pretty much, I'll leave that last one alone since it was just an FYI. Then, the other thing is, on the 19th of September, from 7:00 to 8:30, the Police Department will be there. I'm not necessarily, I think it's like Meet Your Chief, but meet everybody else at Highline College that day, so I highly encourage everybody to attend that, that's watching or not watching, and that will be in Building 7. One thing I am excited about, there was an invitation from the, I do have glasses, so I must read correctly. Homeland Security Emergency Management Group, who does women in leadership forums, has invited several people to speak at this forum on October 3rd from 9:00 to 3:30 at Highline College, and I am so excited to be on that panel, along with Councilmember Buxton and Councilmember Catherine Ushka from Tacoma, as well as Representative Melanie Stambo. And anyone that can attend that, it is free. Please feel free to come. It's going to be exciting because we will be talking about women in politics, and of course, we all know the surge. I think there's 23,000 women that are running in different capacities throughout this country, and I am honored, along with Councilmember Buxton, to be involved in that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting?
All right, well, I hate to do this, but I'm going to go back about a month into the past here, because it's been about that long since we've been able to, since I've been up here, able to talk, back to National Night Out on August 7th. I had the pleasure, again this year, to be at Midway Park with my wife, flipping burgers and turning hot dogs for at least 150 people, and that was a huge event, especially for that neighborhood because of the events that happened the night before that would have been very easy to say, "We're not going to go out to that park, we're going to close it down and not do anything," and the community and all those involved said, "We're not going to do that. This is the spirit of National Night Out. We are going to take back this park. It is going to be our park for tonight," and so it was well-attended, and I just want to thank the chief and Officer Betterman. They were able to clean up a few things that needed to be taken care of prior to that, and also, I wanted to thank Reach Out Des Moines, CHI Franciscan Health, Des Moines Police Foundation, Des Moines Legacy Foundation, King County Library System, and their mobile van and free books for kids. Key Tech Labs, they did a virtual reality, and these two guys are from this area. I believe they went to Mount Rainier and graduated from there, and they just love this community and love to be a part of it, so. The Parks and Rec, I believe I saw Rick out there crushing it like always, and the rest of his team, and the Midway and Pacific Ridge community. Also, I want to thank United Rentals, who for the last three years has provided the large grill and five gallons of propane for no cost so we could cook burgers for the community up there, and then Elena Rogers for being present out there, showing people the garden, and she's also expanding that garden and putting in for a grant to expand the garden up there, so exciting stuff for that neighborhood and helping them feel safe up there. Also, a quick reminder, Des Moines Police Foundation auction is Saturday, September 29th, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Field House. Again, you know, I get to flip burgers and cook hot dogs for everybody attending, and amazingly enough, there's 150 tickets available, and we're almost sold out, so if you guys want to go, get on brown paper tickets, get your tickets, it's going to be a great time, above and beyond the cost of running the auction and everything, the proceeds are going to go for the new K-9 officer that Des Moines is looking to get, so it's going to be a great time, just backyard barbecue style, so it'll be great. And of course, I've got to say that I'm proud of my two children. No dad could be prouder that they take a vested interest in this community as well, so thank you, girls. And then, another quick reminder, kids are back in school. This is the first full week of school, 20 miles an hour in school zones. You know, we're all adults, we all have the responsibility of a ton and a half car that we are in charge of. Children don't always pay attention, not to their own fault, but, you know, they're kids, right? So, many kids a year die because people do not pay attention. Many kids a year die because people do not pay attention. So, and that'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have, in the last few weeks, had opportunity to participate in several events in and around the community in our region. So, uh, I'm only gonna talk about a couple of them because of my colleagues will talk about some, some of the others. Blues and Brews, fabulous, uh, uh, event that happened down at the marina. I checked IDs, so sorry if you, that was my job at the gate. Park Run every Saturday, great community bonding event. I attended the agency, the, also the, the agency scoping meeting as well as the Sustainable Airport Master Plan Community Engagement Meeting. And I appreciated hearing our city manager talk to the residents of North Hill the other night. And I'm gonna leave that to him, um, to talk about that, but I might have a comment at the end of yours, so. The farmer's market, I have a little, uh, commercial tonight about the farmer's market. First of all, I want to mention that Harvest Fest is coming up on September twenty-ninth, the last day of the market. There's gonna be all sorts of fun stuff going on down there. Right now, there's still, the, the administrative team for the market, they're brainstorming about ways to expand the market into other holidays and winter and spring. So I think that would be exciting if next year we had something going on down there and, like a, a special market. And, uh, the farmer's market's doing well. So. What, it's late in the season, but we have now some Des Moines wear that you can purchase at the market. So thinking of Christmas, of course, market's only a couple more weeks, but if you go down there, you think we've got t-shirts. Here's a, here's a men's t-shirt. So these are all some samples. Here's another men's t-shirt with the fish. It's the, the, uh, fish pole. Then there's the women's one, same, let's see, hoodies with the, um, seagulls. They all say Des Moines, Washington. So there are a few different styles. Here's a, a hoodie, a gray hoodie. This is how they're packaged, really nice. Kind of cute. This is a gray hoodie. The hoodies are forty dollars. The t-shirts, um, there's also a long sleeve t-shirt and their, their t-shirts are twenty dollars. Yes, it's a fundraiser. It helps, uh, the market. I'm wearing, I'm wearing a gray t-shirt tonight, a little style show. This one's kind of big, but, so. And, uh, that's all you're gonna see. I'm putting my jacket back on. So, anyway, head on down to the market, support the market, buy Des Moines wear and, uh. So, okay, I just love our farmer's market. I'm so excited about its future. And, uh, okay, I also attended, uh, Domestic Violence Initiative Symposium at Seattle U School of Law. And it was local, state and national professionals getting together to, um, brainstorm about how to move forward in domestic violence prevention. So there were prosecuting attorneys, police officials, police chiefs, advocates, uh, just gathering, hundreds of them gathering in one place to talk. A, a big, um, a big item, a subject right now is these extreme risk protection orders where somebody can file with a local police jurisdiction and have, um, a, a dangerous person have their guns filed with the police, the, um, for a while. So anyway, uh. That was a week, I, I don't have the date. It was about a week and a half ago downtown. So I appreciated hearing from people all over about what's going on. Social justice was another topic and advocacy issues, of course. So they had breakout sessions. Appreciated being able to be there. Then I attended the Public Issues Committee this week, uh, last night. And that is a, a, a gathering of representatives from every city in the county except Seattle. It's an, it's a way to advocate for the issues that affect small cities, but sometimes you don't have the, the oomph or the power to, um, advocate by ourselves for some of it, resource especially. So anyway, we reviewed the draft legislative agenda. That goal was to make it short, one page, similar to the Washington City's legislative agenda, only they added a focus on transportation. So, um, oh, the Public Issues Committee is a, a committee formed by the Sound Cities Association. So the SCA, um, will be, uh, will be advocating in Olympia in regard to transportation, uh, as well as some of the other issues. Big issue homelessness and affordable housing, seems like an issue everywhere. And extensive discussion on that. Then, tonight, uh, we convened, the environment, the Environment Committee convened and we talked about our, um, surface water rates and, uh, reviewed our, it was, the rates are a little bit higher than expected, but we're, but we're right in there with the rest of our municipalities, uh, going forward, so we're doing fine. Then our project, our capital improvement projects, we, twenty nineteen is slated to be the busiest year to date. We've got a ton of projects going. It's a sign of a healthy city, that we are able to do all sorts of things that have been waiting around for a long time. So it's, I think it's exciting. It's gonna be very busy, but it's good. And then we also talked about our, uh, our plan with, uh, Midway Sewer. And there were a few items, they came to us, we need to, you know, work with them in regard to their comp plan and response. So we're, we discussed a few issues, um, in regard to that. So they'll be coming forward in the near future. So I think that is all for me. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Pennington.
Okay, um, we had a public safety meeting on the sixth, so we had quite a few things to discuss. We, we talked about, well, we had a, a, a ATF violent time crimes task force, remember, come in and talk to us about gang graffiti and, and some of the things that that represents. And really, the, the take home message that I'd like to share with everyone is, is if you see graffiti, and there's a difference between tagging and, and the tagging is, is the real colorful stuff, the gang graffiti is just the real stick type figures, but they all mean, it, it all means something. So when you see that, please report it because the longer it stays there, um, the more it can incite violence between gangs. So please report that, that, that's important to do that. We talked about Redondo and we had some discussion over some of the activities that are going on down there. And the police chief, along with, um, other division heads are looking at some, um, to put in together a plan similar to the Pacific Ridge Plan, which was a very successful plan and continues to be. So they're looking at that for that particular community to cover several different areas that, of concern. So, um, looking forward to that. We got a, a update on emergency management. There's, uh, quite a bit of NIMS training that's going on. There'll be some training coming up for the, the council here shortly. And then something that's a really big deal, and, um, I would like to, to acknowledge our emergency manager, George Delgado. And he's put together a CERT program. And it, it, October eleventh is when you're gonna kick that off. Is that, that, did I get that right?
That's when we'll talk about it.
Okay. All right. So we'll talk about it on October eleventh. But the, you know, we, we heard someone earlier say, we need to talk more about planning and, and the work that, that George is doing is incredible. And, and the CERT program, a CERT is, is a, a community emergency response team. And these are actually working within, with the citizens in the community and, and preparing the communities, the neighborhoods, so that they can, can, uh, help themselves for a period of time. And so this is really the, the first one we've ever had here in Des Moines. And I know that he's, he's reached out to the Wesley community. They've expressed some interest over the years to do that as well. And working with the, the Greater Federal Way Emergency Management Group, the Port of Seattle and our, our, our schools and, and all of our neighbors, all of the, the stakeholders. So thank you very much for doing that. That's, and, it's a, it's a really, really big deal in the world of emergency management. It, it really is. So thank you very much. Jump in, the farmer's market, twenty ninth is the last day. I'm not doing a commercial. This is, this is as good as it gets. So show up. It, it's, it's a good, it's, you know, it's always good to support the market. I went to, on Monday night, I went with some of the other council members to the scoping meeting up at Highline College, where, where the port talked about their Sustainable Airport Master Plan. There's a lot of information up there. There's two more events coming up. One is on the seventeenth of this month at the Federal Way Community Center from five thirty to eight thirty. The other one is on the nineteenth at the Sea-Tac Community Center from five thirty to eight thirty. I would encourage you to show up and make your comments, weigh in on, on what's going on up at the airport. So with that, um, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the Blues and Brews, but I didn't check any IDs. But I did accidentally injure somebody with playing beer pong. Long story, not worth telling here. Public safety and emergency management meeting. I went, attended the park run, um, this last Saturday. I didn't run, I cheered them on. They keep trying, but I don't want to die. And I also, the scoping meeting for the Samp. And I, my sentiments would be right in line with Councilmember Bax. I'll leave it at that. North Hill Community Club, where City Manager Mathias, um, gave a well-informed, uh, well-received message to the residents up there. And thank him for that. Particularly my wife Bev, who is the vice president of the North Hill Community Club and it invited him. Last night, I attended the Des Moines Marina Association. And this particular meeting was very interesting. This group really was excited about what the proposal for the marina is. What they, their concern was, is us understanding what a working marina definition is for them. And they were positive about it. They want to find a way to be able to communicate that. They are having a meeting on October tenth for their larger group. This was more of the officers and a few members. And they want to, I know they plan on inviting the city to at least give some kind of a small presentation on what was presented here last week at the study session. They'd be very interested in that. And then I, a, a, another note is on September fifteenth, there's of course the farmer's market. But one of the things that's gonna be happening is several divers are gonna be doing a cleanup of the marina and the pier. I'll be joining them. So if you want to see some of the interesting things that, uh, we'll probably pull out, I plan to put a few of them over by where the city coun, council kind of congregates at the farmer's market, so people can see those and, um, be in awe of, of, of actually what ke, what ends up off the pier. You'd be amazed. Anyway, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My report tonight's gonna be real brief because, uh, as most of you know, I was out of town celebrating, my anniversary happens to be on nine eleven. And I was able to, uh, get away with my wife and celebrate thirty-six years of marriage. So I apologize by not being able to attend any of the memorial services, but I think most people understand that, uh, gotta take care of things at home. So, anyway, other than that, I do want to say that we, um, you know, we've been making all these jokes about birthdays up here. I, I don't know, the majority of us were born in September, which is really interesting because, um, there's a couple folks that think they're getting away under the radar. And, um, I know Councilmember Bax, seventeenth. So we will be.
I'm not seventeen, no.
No.
Uh, yes, I will be fifty-eight years old next Monday when the Seahawks beat the Bears on Monday Night Football.
Wow, nice. The next for somebody, nobody has to reveal their age, by the way. Anyway. Then we have, uh, City Manager Mathias coming up here on the, on the twentieth.
Yeah.
So, uh, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Did I just pass one over here?
We, we mentioned Councilmember Mahoney.
We did?
Well, at last meeting, we did that and, uh.
The, the mayor, the mayor had one on Monday too. I'd like to thank City Manager Mathias for inventing the wheel, though.
Inventing the wheel?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, at least, at least, surprised he didn't give you credit for fire. I don't know. Anyway.
I, I have to say that we didn't have the quality of public relations in those days that we have with Councilmember Mahoney.
Boy, I'm sorry, this is going downhill fast. Anyway, um, so with that, I'm gonna send us over to, uh, the, the administration report and, uh, give Michael his chance to defend himself.
Yeah, thank you. I'll practice a keto, use the energy against him. So we have quite an extensive administration report tonight. We'll try to go through it, um, quickly, but there's a lot of information. But I wanted to just say, you know, reminded of sort of nine eleven. At that time, for me, I was working down in South Florida. So we're real time with what was happening in New York and Washington and Pennsylvania. And, um, the thing about it was, as the first building came down, I ended up in a police bunker, um, working with the cops and everybody else to identify targets in South Florida. And that was one of the most sobering experiences I've ever had because no one had any clue as to the extent of the attack and, and where it was gonna occur. Had the president in the air for, uh, most of that time. So it's just, just a reminder of, of just incredible, almost hard even now to get our hands around, or minds around what occurred, you know, that day. So, just, just comes up every, every year. Did attend North Hill Community Center. That was really a great experience. Had a very interactive, uh, interesting discussion with the residents up there. Councilmember Buxton, did you want to?
Well, our manager just ta, talked about the history of our city and how, where we come and some people were, uh, getting a little, not really combative, but just confrontive. And I just felt like it, to close the meeting, just applauding our city manager for his leadership. He wasn't gonna toot his own horn and I, I feel that way. Anyway, I just applaud his leadership and where our city has come to at this point. It was a great presentation and I appreciated him being there. Thanks.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, so we'll go through this list. One thing I'd like to do is City Manager Monthly Report. And so we've got a number of staff here and I encourage staff to stay through the monthly report, but then if you don't have other, I can't imagine why you wouldn't want to stay, but if you wanted to do something else, that would be fine. So, City Manager's Office, July and August twenty eighteen. Okay, I hold the limit at three items usually. I exceeded that a little here. So, but there's kind of a confluence of some things. We focused on the senior activity centers, went through the transition in July to, um, to our new ma, uh, manager up there. Highline College has a new president, Dr. John Mosby. Went to his reception recently, gave him a tour of the city. The mics work now as a result of, I think, council's insistence that they need to work. So we met with Comcast and they responded. The budget proviso, I'll talk about in a minute. We're trying to get to, uh, the different departments. I'm going with AJ, our new HR director, just talk about what's going on in the city, what the future looks like, um, kind of make sure everybody's on the same page with all the things that are going on. Went to the Wesley Holmes Annual Barbecue, that's always a treat. We took Commissioner Steinbruch on a tour of Des Moines. We've met with Outdoor Research, um, who are going to be locating in the building next to Bartel's and that's their production piece. And they're gonna be locating a certain amount of office, which is yet, um, undetermined to Des Moines. We're excited about that. We've been working a lot with SCORE. I've given updates on that as we've gone along. There's a lot of information with that. We know that Federal Way has indicated they will exit SCORE, so that has a lot of implications for everyone. I know that, uh, Chief Thomas and Beth Ann, our finance director, have been working with the leadership at SCORE to try and identify ways to kind of balance out the cost structure with the revenue structure because we're getting hit pretty hard with that. In July, we did a tour of downtown Seattle with council and staff, with Robert leading it, looking at mixed use development. Had the honor, but also the great sad. Had the honor, but also the great sadness to attend Officer Marino's memorial in Kent with the mayor. Our aviation advisory committee has met. We're working on the Ultra Fine Study. I'll get into that a little bit later. We had an impact meeting with Representative Orwell, who came to City Hall with a number of community leaders to talk about the airport. Tended the marina staff meeting, which was great, once again, and the marina tenant meeting Councilmember Mahoney referred to. So, anyways, that's city manager. Now, let's move on to our chief operations officer, Dan Brewer. And Dan, and Dan, Dan has gone for two weeks hunting elk, so, then we'll just move on. City Clerk?
In July, we had an ice cream social and a true event at the Activity Center. For our public records request, we had 137 in July and 144 in August, totaling 281 with 15 still outstanding. Our total outstanding is 38, and that includes some from 2017. The total requests year-to-date are 1,062, which is 122 less than last year at this time. And that concludes the city clerk report.
Didn't realize I'd be presenting on this, Denise Slater, Planning and Development Services. So, Susan's been participating in the Sustainable Airport Master Plan. Highline Place Building 2 has come in for design review, and so, for those of you who, it's adjacent to Building 1, that's almost done with construction up by Highline College. We're in the process of our Shoreline Master Program periodic review, so we held an open house at the Activity Center and then had a booth at the farmer's market. And there's a website link in case people want to learn more about it. And then, building permits were issued for Phase 2 of the Wesley Homes project. Highline Place Building 1 is almost done. Construction has begun on BB Nail's site. And then, Des Moines Theater, lots happening with the foundation and construction work on that.
Thanks, Denise. And also, Susan is away at the Washington Planning Directors Conference in Shalane this week.
I'm Teresa Duval, Court Clerk. We had a new court clerk, Ashley Grover. She started September 4th. She comes to us after being a paralegal in private practice for the last 10 years. She's filling the term-limited position. Des Moines DUI Court will enroll their first participant this month, so that's up and running. The court continues to vet potential candidates and are hoping to continue adding participants throughout the remainder of the year. Melissa Patrick, our probation officer, presented a session on navigating the court interwebs for misdemeanor probation academy at the Criminal Justice Training Center earlier this week. The session focused upon different programs and web-based tools available to probation officers to more effectively and efficiently manage their caseloads.
Thank you. Great job.
Evening, council members, members of the community. Council, City Manager Mathias, George Ogato, from Emergency Management. Almost forgot. A lot of exciting news. There's a lot going on in fulfilling our goal to build a strong, resilient, comprehensive preparedness program for our whole community. The points I'm going to discuss today build on the four pillars that we build for our program. Those pillars being employee training and readiness, family awareness, community training and outreach, and regional partner planning and coordination. As Deputy Mayor Pennington talked about, our CERT program has been registered now. What that means is we're official, we're part of the state program. We've been working very hard with partners in the area, both the government partners and private partners, to start to build a base of volunteers that'll be part of our first class, and thankful to Barb Bassi for the help with that. There'll be a lot more information forthcoming on that, but as the Deputy Mayor alluded to, we're looking at, after mid-October, to release the date of our first class and how citizens can go about enrolling in that class, where it'll be held, and a lot more news on that coming, so I'm very excited about that. Our NIMS, and position-specific training, and what I mean by position-specific is training for personnel in our city to be able to occupy a chair in the Emergency Operations Center. So, that specific training is coming forth. I've been working with King County Office of Emergency Management, building into their training program. We've built a great partnership, and not only the port, but our Zone 3 Coordinator, which we happen to fall in through King County Emergency Management, and the Training Cadre at the Emergency Management in King County are really absorbing us into their programs. So, there's going to be so many more opportunities for growth, so many more opportunities for our community, not only the staff, but our community, everyone to be a part of, so we can build a whole community approach. Very, very exciting. And the NIMS piece is similar to basic training. Those are the essential foundational elements that we have to build. So, a lot more information coming forth on that, and I'll present that later. Our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is kind of been a little bit of a, a little bit of a change in the structure for that. After consulting with some of the experts in the area, we're moving to what's called an agency department-focused format. So, basically, being able to address disasters, being able to address challenges in a way that better suits our community and our city, and better use, having better use of our resources. So, under the old format, we would run out of resources much quicker. So, the federal government changed some of the approaches to being able to build a program, and I'm very proud of how we're going to do that. And there'll be more training specific to that, but it'll be a plan that will not sit on a shelf to gather dust. It'll be a usable plan that not only will be usable for our staff, but our council members and our community. And it'll be posted in a place that'll be accessible to all, and I'm looking forward to that. And there'll be more information on the status of that toward the end of the year, but we're making great strides in that. Core capabilities process is part of that CEMP, or Comprehensive Emergency Management approach. So, what we're looking is working with every department in the city to look at how we respond to disasters, what resources we have, and what processes we go through when we do respond to a disaster. It'll be a format that allows us to exercise and train specifically to how we do that, so we can address any disaster. And once we have this foundation built, we can address major events, we can address a number of challenges we have as a city. But the best part about it is, when those bills start rolling in, because with recovery, that's 60 to 75% of the cost we'll incur in a disaster comes in recovery. And because we'll be trained, because we'll understand the documentation pieces, we'll be much better suited to recover the cost of a disaster because of our planning, because of the knowledge of our personnel, and it's also a very, very exciting thing. Working with Dan and Michael, I'm sorry, Mr. Mathias there, to set up, there's a lot of Michaels, to set up our Des Moines Area Emergency Management Group. So, it'll be somewhat of a policy group, but it'll be the primary stakeholders in our area, so we just can't depend on ourselves. We've got to depend on businesses, we've got to depend on government, we've got to depend on other organizations within our city in a disaster to come together, to work together, to share resources, to communicate, and to get our community back up and running as fast as possible. And the only way to do that is to open lines of communication with our partners. That group is growing. I introduced roster to Michael last week, and we're going to add to that. But they're going to have a role, and that role is going to be to help our city become resilient, become better prepared, and to become better communicate, communicate better with our community so that we can be ready to address any challenge. That's my report, and I'll have more coming in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, George. One of the things, if we go back to emergency management for a moment, one of the things is, as George is going through the different elements, it's, you know, they're like concepts, and it's like what we're seeing is kind of the visible portion of the iceberg. But in October, we're going to come back and do a very comprehensive review of emergency management, when you can see all that, all the, what the entire iceberg looks like, the entire context that George has created, and the manner that he's going about this is very impressive, and really great follow-up to a year later from Emmitsburg. And we're looking forward to presenting that to council. But then, a lot of what you've described will have more kind of bones on it to understand how this all plays out, because everything he's talking about is amazing. I've seen, you know, kind of a preview of some of this, and I know council's going to be excited because it's very innovative, very functional, and it's going to put us way forward in terms of being able to respond as a city. So, I appreciate that, George.
Good evening. Beth Anne Rowe, Finance Director. The last couple months have been fairly busy. As the first one, we did the bond ordinance for the 2018 LTGO and refunding bonds that you approved. We also reviewed and finalized the 2019-2024 capital improvement plan, which you adopted. We met with legal and community development departments to review our required update for the city business license rules, and that will be coming forward in the next few weeks because we must adopt the model ordinance by January 1st, 2019. Myself and the Finance Manager were able to participate in the City Council Seattle Tour, and then the city's financing team held a tour and a rating aging, rating agency presentation for S&amp;P Global Ratings, and we were lucky and received a AA+ bond rating on July 30th. And then, August, we kind of, we kicked things off with our City Council Budget Retreat for the 2019 budget. We also met with Microflex regarding services that they provide in tracking sales and business and occupation taxes. Then, our next step in the bond was we got a successful pricing for the bond issue, and we finalized the bond documents for that issue on September 6th. We've also worked with IT to provide departments access to revenue and expenditure reports in the financial accounting system, and we continue our work on the 2019 preliminary budget document. Will be coming to you in October.
Thank you. And also, we'll have a presentation in a little later in the admin report on the bond, kind of a summary of the bond activity.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Tim George, City Attorney. The last couple months, we worked on the draft telecommunications ordinance update, which was presented to the council and was approved. So, that's great. We're now working under that new code, working with telecommunications providers. Some of that info was presented tonight at the Franchise Committee, working on some small cell franchise, which is, which will be coming forward to the full council in the next month or so. Our Assistant City Attorney worked with the marina on a mortgage dispute that was appealed to the hearing examiner. He did an extensive amount of briefing on that, and ultimately, the appeal was withdrawn. Our prosecutor and paralegal have been working to scan in every record that we have, and they've done that now. We got rid of two really big filing cabinets that took up a whole wall. And so, now, all of our criminal prosecution paperwork is gone. Everything's electronic, so it's going to save us a lot of money on paper, and it's really cool that... Do you have a question?
Really cool. It's very cool.
Yeah, it's very cool.
What's your backup plan?
Our backup plan is, if the power's out, we don't work, so.
No, Tim. Wrong answer.
That sounds funny, but it is a plan.
That's true.
We're working with our emergency management. We can always print it. I don't know what we'll do. Another update for our prosecutor, this last month in July, she had back-to-back jury trials, so she went Thursday, Friday. We had a lot of jurors in here, in two criminal cases, one for stalking, one for assault for, and the next one for criminal trespass. She got convictions on all those counts with two separate defendants. So, it's a lot of work in two days, a lot of preparation, so that was a good outcome. And then, again, we're working with engineering on the condemnation documents. The City Council authorized City Attorney to file that lawsuit. We're still in negotiations, and it looks like we're going to avoid that litigation and get a negotiated outcome. So, we're kind of in the final stages of that, but we'll keep the council posted. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Councilmember Katie Bevigny in for Scott Wilkins. So, we actually had, just going back to July and August, we had a really great Fourth of July and waterland weekend because of the wooden boats that were there. Our fuel sales were extremely strong the last two months as normal for this time of year. It's boating season. Our yacht club visits is equally strong, having groups in almost every weekend. This was one of our best seasons and actually continues to be for weekly guest mortgage. Fishing's been good. We are actually still full Monday through Friday during the week. Usually, it's weekends for sure, but this year, weeks have been actually really great. The marina was full. We are at occupancy for August. We installed, our staff installed, the new ADA ramp that's right near the farmer's market. We were able to get rid of two of our derelict boats, and it says two to go, but we actually just got word today that they will go this month, so that's great. We can get rid of those. And then, our parking revenues, year two through August, really, it was a little over $130,000, so.
Thank you.
Rick Scott, Recreation Manager. A few highlights for Parks Recreation and Senior Services. The Arts Commission Concert Series concluded August 22nd with the Beatniks. And if you haven't been out to any of the concerts in the past or this year, they are probably one of the best community events that we hold. It truly is for everybody, all ages, and it's, this year was a record-breaking year for attendance. As you can see, over 6,000 people attended the concerts this year. Our events and facilities, folks managed 24 rentals in July and 27 in August, and that does not include those community events, such as the concerts in the park and other community events. Smoke on the Water was also held in conjunction with the first Music in the Park. It was, it was sold out once again. It was a great event, good food, people had a great time. For Recreation, our Summer Camp Chaos ended the summer up 20% over last year with over 323 registrants, so that's huge for us. Our programs continue to grow. U T Ball ended in August with 11 teams and 152 registrations. U Stalker started in late August, and there are currently a total of 33 teams with 369 registrations. Last year in fall, we had, I think, 285. So, we continue to grow, like I said. You can tell that that wave from Seattle is still coming this way a little bit as our programs continue to grow. The Wild West Bingo in October, I think there's only 24 individual seats left. So, if you guys didn't get a seat last time, I was the poor schmuck at the door, holding people back, saying, "Sorry, we're sold out." People yelling at me the whole time. If you don't have your tickets, get them now, because I will have to hold you back. The Activity Center had an outreach table at Saturday's farmer's market. It successfully brought in more participants. They held their first caregiver support group, which attracted 15 people, and they had really high marks.
Quick question, the caregiver support group, this is the first I've heard of that.
They just, they just implemented it for caregivers, for, to be able to talk to each other and, and just kind of help each other out.
So, for caregivers that go to people's homes, or just?
Yeah, just caregivers in the community that go to different things. It's not just specific to one, one group. And then, the majority of the fall trips for the Senior Services Center are sold out with waiting lists, and that concludes the report. Just one more comment for Councilmember Mahoney. Go Eagles.
Apparently, there's a scrimmage against Eastern Washington by Washington State this weekend.
Good evening, council. Mayor, City Manager, Commander Gradden here. This is not a- Good evening, Council. Mayor, City Manager, Commander Gradden here. This is not a all-encompassing list of everything we have going on, being a 24-hour department, but I'm held to six. And so, I just want to touch on a few things. A redondo, a community response. We had some flare-ups of some violent criminal activity this summer. We moved some additional resources and officers down to that area during times that our data told us that crimes were occurring Friday and Saturday nights. Some of our response has included partnering with Highline College. And we are in negotiations to have access to the Mass Center 24 hours a day. So we can, our officers can take breaks down there. They can have meetings, do some reports, just to get, get the colors down there in the, in the south end of the city. We've ordered some cameras, some surveillance cameras, which are here and ready to be installed. These are PTZ cameras, pan tilt zoom cameras that we can access from our phones and monitor. Pretty exciting stuff. We have taken part and assisted with other parts of the city with doing some restricted late-night parking, which has greatly decreased the amount of criminal activity late into the evenings, which we identified as part of that problem. The canine program, just to give you an update, Mike Bamer will be our canine handler. He is a master handler already. He already has a dog that is retired, Doc, who will be doing a presentation at the banquet, put on by our Des Moines Police Foundation. We have ordered some equipment to outfit his car. The car is going to require some extra fans, air conditioning, remote access to open the doors, a cage, stuff like that. He's going, he's slated to go to training in November and December. Prior to that, he's got a kennel located, nationally recognized, actually internationally recognized kennel in Pennsylvania, where he will go and pick up his German Shepherd. And so from there, our crime analyst detective has been selected. That's going to be Detective Jay West, who comes to us with just a ton of knowledge, comes to that position with just a ton of technical knowledge, and will really bring, bring our crime analytics and our evidence-based practices to, to a different level. And that's, super excited to get him in there. He'll immediately start going to, going to some advanced training and will really assist us in those areas, as well as forensics, computer forensics and telephone technology. The ATF position has been announced and the officer's been selected, and that's Master Police Officer Isaac Helgren. Isaac Helgren, joining that ATF task force is really going to be a force multiplier, really on a national level for us, and help us really control some of the violent gun crimes that occurs in and around our city and in South King County. Sergeant Promotional Test is, is well underway in the planning process. We're working closely with public safety testing to develop an extremely comprehensive test that helps us really look at the best candidate and the best person for us. We're bringing assessors in from all over the state to assist us with selecting this, this next sergeant. The, it's a series of tests that will occur this month and also into next month. And new hires. We did lose a couple officers in our training program that did not meet benchmarks, and we're not going to lower our standards whatsoever. So we, we're pretty excited about our, our next two folks that started this month. Mara Domonowski comes to us from the corrections side and from Community Department of Corrections. She is waiting for her academy spot. So she's undergoing some orientation in our agency right now. Rochelle Blackwell comes to us from the city of Tacoma, and she has already jumped in and is in A phase of our training program. So...
Thanks, Commander. I think that's a good time. One question we have for council tonight related to that is that on the 27th, we'll be bringing in an agenda item forward to order eight new vehicles for 2019 to begin the ordering process prior to the adoption of the 2019 budget. But there's one car, one of the vehicles must be ordered for the new detective, must be ordered by the 21st as the deadline for all police 2019 interceptors orders for the production run ending and being delivered around the end of March. So we want to get in the queue right now. So we'll bring back to you a formal item on the 27th, but we'd just like concurrence from council to proceed with that at this point. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, to dovetail, that was, that vehicle and that position, I think, was discussed at the August 2nd budget retreat. So, and, so Brandon Carver, Public Works Director. So for July and August, you may be noticing some city wayfinding signs popping up. Our crews are actually doing the install on those, and we're working with Department of Transportation. There'll be one that is attached to the Marine View Drive Bridge as you come into town from, from the north. Few, we've talked a lot about the paving project on 2/23rd. Unfortunately, we had a work stoppage that stole about three weeks. And so, back to work, I think, Monday or Tuesday this week. And we're trying to make up for lost time and get, get some pavement down before the rains arrive. So unfortunately, we hope to be done before school, but we'll, we'll get her done. And we're, we're working with the school district and staying in communication. We submitted a grant for 24th Avenue South from South...
Sorry, I hate to interrupt you.
Yeah, absolutely.
With the work stoppage on 2/23rd, are they going to double time and, and work on Saturdays and Sundays? Or is that gonna, I guess what I'm getting at is, is the end of this result of the strike going to cost us more money?
That question was asked, I think, when we mentioned this issue previously. And generally, it's hard to answer, but generally, no. I mean, the contractor has a right to ask for extended working days to finish the project for conditions that are outside their control like this. We do retain our hired CM firm, KPG. So it's not like they go away. There was still work being done on the site as far as maintaining some of the gravel potholes, watering twice a day. So some of those management expenses are hard to recover, and it's just an unfortunate result. But we, they, the contractor still has plenty of working days, and they haven't come to us as far as working overtime or on weekends. And by our recollection, I think we're still about three weeks out. I don't want to promise that because everything's weather-dependent. But I think we'll be okay.
I've just heard other sites that have had the same operators have gone to double time now. So it's, instead of just normal straight time or time and a half or a few hours worked overtime, they're double timing it. And it's costing, you know, extreme amount of money over the contract value because they're just adding man-hours to it.
That's a good, good question. We're just still on straight time. Submitted a grant for 24th Avenue South between South 2/23rd and Kent Des Moines Road. We hear about, we hear back mid-November on that. We, working together with PD, collaborating on their sector database system, helps us pull accident information. So it's a real positive step to be working with PD on that. A, the South 2/51st Storm Outfall Project is essentially done. It's on a project suspension until we get to the fall, where the contractor will come back and do some plantings. But that project was knocked out in six days. The contractor, Road Construction Northwest, their quality contractor, they also did our Saltwater Bridge. And we, a couple of weeks ago, we mentioned the potential changes for the Stephen J. Underwood Playground Project. And staff has been meeting with, and setting up some meetings with the police guild. And we'll, we'll loop back with, with the council on that. But we had a, a site meeting with some members of the police department. And we're kind of putting together a, a, a better picture of what we might do and then reach out to the guild. You want to add to that?
Yeah, just that, I think some of the comments, especially made by Deputy Mayor Pennington and Councilmember Mahoney, relative to making sure that anything we did was kind of in line with the memorial we have there at Officer Underwood, would be preserved, enhanced, incorporated in appropriate manner. So we are very conscientiously working toward that resolution. And excited about the possibilities of doing some kind of dynamic change to, to what's, what will be available in the park.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
So, in your packet...
Sorry, in your packet, there's the, the quarterly report. If anyone has questions on that, please contact us. It's at whatever point. I just want to run through a couple of things. We have two guests here that were going to give some presentations. But I wanted to update everyone on things related to the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, since this is such a critical issue for our city. On, as you know, I think we mentioned that on Thursday, the 6th, there was a, what's called a public agency scoping meeting, where public agencies, ourselves, other cities, another number of other SEPA officials, met with the port staff and their consultants to talk about the scoping process for the, for the master plan. The scoping process is what defines the context for the environmental review across all issues, transportation, health, noise, all, all aspects of impacts. And it was very interesting because the four cities, Des Moines, Burien, Sea-Tac, and Normandy Park have come together, as council knows, since council was involved in signing the interlocal agreement, approving the interlocal agreement, to hire consultants, international consultants with specialization in different fields and then work together. And two of them were at this meeting. And it was an eye-opener. And it was an eye-opener, I think, also for the airport. Because these guys know their stuff, and they know the FAA, and they know how the flight patterns are determined, and you know how the impacts are determined, and what's legal and what isn't legal, and all of that. So we have engaged them. They will be helping write the scoping response from the SEPA officials. We actually had a conference call even this morning. And then what, what we're going to do is we'll have a draft of their comments by next Monday. And then next Monday, we will have the Aviation Advisory Committee review those comments, have any input that they want to provide. And either we'll be sending, the SEPA officials from the four cities will be sending a scoping letter comment written by these consultants, for the most part, with input from all of us. And then the four cities will most likely send independent letters regarding the scoping process. So the Aviation Advisor Committee will potentially recommend some aspect of that, what we want to focus on. And we'll bring that to council on 27th, we anticipate. And the close of comments is the 28th. So that all works out pretty well. But just, just to let you know that, you know, we're putting a great deal of time and effort and attention into how the city responds in our interests, and then with our, within our localized region, to all the cities that, that as we say, receive disproportionate impacts from the operations of the airport. And the expense of those disproportionate impacts results in great regional economic benefits. So the four, almost like the further you are away from the airport, the more the economic benefit. And the closer you are, the more the balance kind of is skewed. And so we want to, you know, do everything we can to support activities through the, through the process that relieve us of impacts to the greatest possible degree. And I'll just tell you that one of the things that we're most interested in is the idea that they have to do a baseline, establish the baseline, so you can determine what the impacts are as you go forward and grow. Well, we're not, we do not accept that 2018 is the baseline. We think the baseline is 2012. And then it goes, it goes back in time because there's been year double-digit growth, year over year for a number of years. But there has not been this level of attention to the environmental mitigation. So just kind of bring you up to date. There's more to that story as we go forward. I think what I'd like to do at this time is invite the Division Director for King County Solid Waste to give us a brief presentation on, on this subject, solid, solid waste management plan. I believe it was Pat, Pat McLaughlin.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. For the record, my name is Pat McLaughlin. I have the pleasure of serving as King County Solid Waste Division Director. And wanted to spend just a little bit of time with you this evening, talking about planning. And, but before I do that, I, I have to say, I've been visiting many of the cities. I think I've hit about 25 or 30 cities in the last couple of months, interacting with the, the councils. And, and I am just really impressed by the level of engagement that you and your staff have shown and your commitment to your community. It's really, it's, it's interesting. And I love the personalities and, and the commitment that you've made. That, I don't, spent a lot of time in Des Moines, but I'm, I'm intrigued to spend a little bit more time here. So just my compliments to, to your city. You've perhaps heard the old adage, "If you fail the plan, you plan to fail." Tonight, and you have a presentation before you, and just in the interest of time, what I would propose is I'd just share with you and talk to you for about five minutes, and not try and rifle through the slides, but then in the maybe five minutes or so that follow, if there's a specific topic that a slide will speak to, we can, we can dive to it. But we've been doing a lot of planning for the last two years, not just the solid waste division independently, of course, but working collaboratively across King County. Because our regional solid waste system is comprised of King County and 37 cities. And we're really happy that Des Moines is an integral part of, of that regional solid waste system. And for the last two years, we've been diving deep into updating our comprehensive plan. Because it hasn't been updated since 2001. And we are going to run out of landfill space in less than 10 years. And we need to know that we've got the right solution identified and implemented by 2028. And the plan that is now before our council and reflects the regional collaboration provides that assurance that we won't have any disposal gaps in our system. It also addresses some inequities in transfer service. So we have transfer stations across King County as well. And one of the things that we've been agonizing for too long is how to address the northeast part of our county, a very fast-growing population. And they are retaining one of the oldest stations that doesn't provide the type of environmental protections, the type of recycling and other services that the rest of the county is beginning to experience as we've modernized our system. And so that's the second element that's addressed in the plan. And then third, around recycling policies. We have, as a region, some of the best recycling rates in the country. However, they've stalled. And they've been stalled for quite some time. And I heard mention of the, of the impacts of China's new policies, right? The China Sword. My message to you, and, and for you to share with your constituents, is keep recycling, but keep it empty, clean, and dry. Right? The big challenge that we have, and when you hear about China Sword, that doesn't affect 85% of our recycled materials. So we recycle over 1.2 million tons of materials every year. It's tremendous. 1.2 million. We, we bury about 960,000 tons. So more of the tonnage is actually getting back into the marketplace where it belongs. But we can do a lot better. And so the third area that's covered in this comprehensive plan speaks to harmonizing our regional recycling policies. Because quite honestly, as, even though we have great recycling levels as a region, as I mentioned, they've stalled. And I think a big reason they've stalled is that depending on where you live, work, and play, recycling rules are different. So how you recycle here in, in your fine city is different than how they do it in Renton. It's different than how they do it in Seattle, or Bellevue, or Algonah, just a little bit. But that breeds confusion. Because we, we live and work and play all over this beautiful area. And people try to recycle right, but it gets pretty confusing. So the third element in the plan is really to work as a region and see if we can harmonize some of those recycling strategies. But the most significant decision that is represented in this comprehensive plan is around our long-term disposal. We have, for over 50 years, benefited from a local landfill, Cedar Hills, it's in the Maple Valley area. And that's allowed us to manage our waste locally, keep our jobs local. We do it in a very environmentally responsible way. And we looked at different alternatives. And we had to, because even extending the life of the landfill to ensure that we don't have a gap in service 10 years from now, only buys us so much time. We are going to need another solution after that. The, the recommendation in the proposal is that we take, pardon the, the analogy, but one last bite of the apple, and extend the life of the landfill. It's the lowest-cost path available to the region, so it's the least impact to rates. It also affords the most favorable impacts from an environmental perspective. And I would say it's the lowest risk, given our experience. But we're going to need to continue planning. Even should the region adopt the, the, the plan and proposal that's, that's before our council now, that buys us a long time, you know, close to 20, 40 or so, depending on how that final cell is, is designed. And we'll need to continue planning for what's next, whether it's waste export, or waste to energy, or some variation thereof. So there's more work to be done. But the region has worked really well together to put this plan in place to ensure that our service and our environmental goals remain intact, and in fact, get better as we move forward. And so we're excited about the plan that's before you. I would be happy to maybe pause there. I didn't check my timer here, but I suspect I'm getting close. I didn't check my timer here, but I suspect I'm getting close, and answer any questions about what I've covered, or perhaps what I didn't mention.
Just maybe one question. So when you talk about regional, are you networking with other counties, Pierce and Snohomish County as well, or is this just King County only?
So relative to the comprehensive plan, it speaks to the policy framework for King County's unincorporated areas and the 37 cities, which is basically everybody but Seattle and Milton. Seattle has their own solid waste system. Milton is a part of Pierce County's system. So for the solid waste plan, it's our framework. However, I do interact with Pierce County, Snohomish County. In fact, I'll be traveling later this month to interact with the solid waste managers from across the state, because we really face many of the same challenges. And so there's a lot of networking and information sharing and best practice collaboration that takes place, that we can then bring back to our own county. And quite honestly, we're often viewed as the leaders, because we've got some amazing innovation and, and thought leaders in our system, and in your city. So they look to us to, to help lead the way many, many times.
So you said earlier about some of the cities do things a little differently in terms of their recycling. And is there an effort underway to standardize, so that it is across the board with zero confusion?
Well, that is the dialogue that is just beginning now. And we'll probably have to take some, some baby steps there, because even the county, you know, believes that we know the best way to do things in the unincorporated areas. And, and your city, you know, knows the personality and needs and, and unique features or industries in your area. And so somehow, we have to find that common ground. And that's not, that's not going to be easy, but I, I think we can navigate our way through it. Tomorrow, we have an advisory committee meeting. It's called Mizwak, and we're going to be talking about some of the initial steps that we could take around shredded paper and the one-use plastic bags. And just maybe taking a uniform approach that says, don't put those in the recycle bin. They don't belong there. They could be recycled, but not through that bin. If you put those materials in the bin, they end up getting wrapped around equipment and making a big mess, right? So there could be some baby steps that we could take, commodity by commodity, that could begin to make a difference. And we're going to start exploring those tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And as we said, we, in the, in the, in the exchange for brevity, we said that perhaps you would want to come back at some point and go into this in more depth. So thank you.
Yes, I'd be happy to come back. Our county council is going to begin deliberating on this comprehensive plan. The Regional Policy Committee has already begun that process, and that'll continue through, through the end of this year at least. The cities, yourselves, will have an opportunity to take action once the county has taken its action. And so at any point in time, whether it's later this year or early next year, when the city adoption process begins, I would certainly be happy to come back and talk about any, any detail with you or your staff about these policy options. So thank you very much for your time.
If I could, before you leave, something you said triggered a question. And I also heard a mention, and from one of my colleagues. You know, it's, it seems like it's going to take policy, because you have different cities that have different rules, and they have different carriers that they contract. And so how all this is handled, it seems it's, is, is going to continue to be very different unless you could come together in some kind of unified policy that says, look, this is what we do with the following, and this is how we're going to do it, so we can manage this. And then, you know, the carriers are going to have to bid based on those rules, and, and the cities are going to have to adopt based on rule. I mean, because in the end, it's at, it's at a recycling plant or in the landfill. So I, I, I mean, am I missing something?
No, actually, Mayor, you're right on the money. In fact, we have what's called a Responsible Recycling Task Force. We have cities on that task force, and we have the haulers and processors on that task force. It's aimed at both education and outreach, but it's also looking at what goes in the bin. So we're having those very conversations right now. And as I said, they're going to start going through our advisory committees in terms of recommendations for what that common product list might look like. So those, those conversations are happening right now.
You know, and if there's need for policy at the city level, which I imagine there may be, the Sound Cities Association pick, this is the type of thing that you have all these cities in the room, and to bring it up and get the, get those entities to collectively champion with you, you get a chance to get this done.
We would welcome any such opportunity.
Please?
That was a, one of the other issues that was discussed, and they do have a, a policy advisor who did bring a presentation about this last night. And so they, they are, your, your organization is soliciting.
The key is to get someone who can bring it all together and get everybody behind it. So anyway, I, I thank you for.
Thank you for your time.
Making sure I can clarify it. Look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one more item on the admin report, and it's, you know, we save the, the good news for last. So I asked Caitlin. Beth Ann, I don't know if you want to say anything, but, okay, bring Caitlin in. And let me just say, so you'll get an update on our, on the entire bond process that we went through. And I just, you know, Steve Markout was amazing in helping us kind of guide us through this process. Beth Ann has been, been amazing as well, kind of jumping in midstream. Tim, you know, Dan, just great teamwork, and we're really, really excited by the outcome. So with that, thank you.
I would echo those same thoughts. And good evening again. My name is Caitlin Caldwell. I'm with KeyBank Capital Markets in Seattle, and I am here to represent the city's bond underwriting team. So I was here about two months ago in mid-July, and at that point, we were, we're talking about the city's bond ordinance. But we had just had a great meeting with S&amp;P earlier that week, and we, you'd asked me, Mayor, Mayor Peanut asked me how that went, and, you know, really what we think the outcome would be, and what the impact would be to the city. And I said, let's take pause on that. I defer on that question until we really have the outcome and we know what this looks like. So that is why I'm here tonight. And like Beth Ann had mentioned earlier, we were very, very happy at the result of the rating. The city did get a double A-plus from S&amp;P. Before we dig into the rating in too much detail, I did want to hit on the actual bond sale itself and the results. And we've got a lot of numbers up here, so I'll just hit on a really high level. Again, the bonds had two components. We refunded the city's prior 2008 bonds, and we also issued a new money, what we call a new money piece for some Marina-related projects. So the term of the refunding bonds was obviously shorter. That was only 10 years, because we did not extend the maturity. And the, the term of the, the new money piece was longer at 20. The savings in the bottom, top right, I should say, what we call the NPV, or net present value savings, that is the amount of savings the city will realize in today's dollars net of all costs. And that is about $550,000, so over half a million dollars over the life of those bonds, which I will note is, I think, slightly better than we thought when we looked at this first in January, when rates were, interest rates were actually lower. So that was a great result. And then you can see there at the bottom, again, just the, the annual debt service for the new money piece, but that true interest cost is really the city's effective cost of capital. So it paid about 3.25% on that 20-year piece. So it's a great result for the city. Any questions on this before we move on? Okay. Onto the good stuff. So again, the city did earn a double A-plus from S&amp;P Global. We've got a chart over here on the right. There are three major credit rating agencies out there, Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. The city's two, prior bonds maintained a rating from Moody's. Now, this is very important. You can see there that, that prior rating was an A1, which technically falls in a, a lower category than the current rating. When bonds are issued, you can't just peel off a rating and decide, hey, we no longer want to have this rating on there. So when the city goes to market, it has what we call a split rating. So investors can still see the A1 rating of the Moody's, that Moody's assigned, and it still has the double A-plus rating. So really what that means is that the city's 2018 bonds priced at yields or interest rates that were a little bit higher than your true double A-plus, right? You're sort of, they kind of look at you somewhere in the middle. And so moving down, down below here, we, we talked to our underwriting desk and said, well, if we didn't have that double A-plus rating from the city, what would the impact have been? And our, our desk said, well, it would have costed the city about 10 basis points, which is 0.1% interest cost, which would have been about $50,000 over the life of the bonds. But like, when those 2012 bonds are paid off around December 1, 2022, that rating will no longer be visible. So it, it would be a true double A-plus credit in investors' eyes. And we look at that as an additional, maybe 10 basis points in today's rates. So you're looking at about maybe 15 to 20 basis points impact. So you could say maybe $100,000 in related to the bond issue. Now, I know what you think, that actually seems maybe a little bit lower than you might expect. And I think it is in a historical context. So in, on this chart here, what you're seeing is what we call credit spreads. And these are not interest rates. They are the amount of extra yield that you pay in addition to the triple A rate. So sort of like when you go get a mortgage, there's a baseline rate, and then based on your credit score, the bank assigns a additional credit spread to reflect the risk of you as a borrower. So the double A is that bottom line there, so you can see the, really the, the cost to a triple, to, the additional cost you would pay from a triple A rating is about maybe 25 basis points. And then the, the single A is above that, and the B double A is above that. But what really the story is here is that these credit spreads have compressed significantly in recent years. We're really not near what we call normal market environments, because interest rates are so low. So I think as interest rates continue to rise here, which we do expect to happen throughout the rest of 2018 into 2019, that benefit will only really continue to grow better. So that's really all I had. I'm here to answer any questions. Again, the, the rating outcome was, was very solid. We're, we are very pleased. I will note that the split rating is not an anomaly, especially down here in South, South King County. We've seen that with a number of our clients. We're continuing to talk to Moody's. We talk to them every year, and we encourage the city to do the same thing, to stay in front of them. I know they call every year. Continue to talk to them and tell, tell your story, and, you know, we hope to see some improvement on that side as well. Any questions?
So just to clarify, in regard to the Moody's ratings, so you're saying, if you stay in front of them, there's a, there's a possibility that it will, they could raise their rating to equal the S&amp;P rating, and that will make a difference in the spread, the credit spread in two years?
Correct. So when the city, next time the city goes back to the bond market, it would then have a higher rating from Moody's is the hope and the idea, and so that your, your interest cost in the bond market would be lower.
So they have the option to raise that at any given time? I mean, anytime they don't have like an annual day for us that they have to do it? They could just do it next week if they wanted?
That's a great question. They could at any time. They typically review the credit once a year. So if they reviewed you in September, it might be hard to go back and say in October, hey, we'd like, we'd like to talk to you again. But they can move, you know, a city's rating or any rating really up or down whenever they like. Yeah.
Thank you. So do we reach out? Do they reach out? Is it mutual, or, or what's the best thing to do?
I think that our team needs to continue to, to talk to them, and, you know, really work with Beth Ann. I know they do reach out every year, and I think maybe put a little, you know, put a little bit of thought when they do. We can have more of a formal call. And I think the city has been trying as well. I don't want to discount that. It's been a source of frustration for me, to all my clients. So it's not like, again, it's not like the city has been really singled out here. So I think that the city should continue to, to keep in touch, and when they do reach out to you, you know, please contact us, and we can try to put some thoughts together.
Just one comment, you know. So this, this ended very successfully. But I think what has to be a part of that acknowledgement is starting back at a point where we were looking at a pretty dismal future, and that was only about three years ago. And the number of steps that city council took, staff took, to try and figure out how to right the ship. And we took a number of steps, dozens and dozens of actions, to try and make sure that we ended up in a sustainable solvent position. And so confirmation of that through our bond rating, I think, is, is just, has to be considered absolutely exciting as an outcome for what we were looking at a few years ago. So just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
I agree with that. Yes, in summary, I just, I wanted to say that the rating was very strong. We're all very, very happy with that outcome. And the bond pricing went very well. And just keep doing kind of what you guys have been doing. Continue to modernize those financial policies, you know, keep taking looks at those, and just making, making great choices for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know. Concludes my report.
Well, before we, I'm not going to let you conclude it. When I, when you look at the gap between the credit ratings in the down economy that we all know about, beginning 2008, 229, that, or 2009, that's when it really matters. And as we continue to move forward, you know, those lines are going to change again. So tying ourselves to the double A credit spread is, is absolutely the right thing to do. Next time we get a chance to talk to anybody from Moody's, we have to ask them out and take them on a tour, and, you know, do the same types of things that we do with anybody else who's interested in this city. Let them know what our story is, and, and, you know, show them what we've done.
So we can say this now, right? But we did take them on a tour.
Moody's?
Yeah. Yeah, no, Standard Port.
Standard Port, no. I say, you've got to take, I'm talking Moody's.
Yeah, no. That was a very cool thing, because in the end, as we're starting to talk about the financial picture, they were more excited than we were. That was, because they thought, wow, this is awesome. Can't believe what's going on here. They sent two folks up from San Francisco. So that was very cool, so.
All right. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay.
And, and now we have free T-shirts.
Yes.
Now we have.
Hopefully, none of the bond proceeds.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, well, with that little, let's move forward to the consent agenda. Can I have the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, senior services advisory committee appointments. Item four, amendment number two to communications site lease agreement, Fieldhouse. Item five, setting a public hearing date to consider draft ordinance 18-105, amending the Des Moines 2035 comprehensive plan and preferred land use map. Item six, setting a public hearing to consider draft ordinance 18-099, related to South 216th Street zoning reclassification. Item seven, human services advisory committee appointments. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Councilmember Nutting. Second by Councilmember Banks. Any discussion? Seeing that, I'm just going to, I, I want to point out, items three and item seven are the appointments to senior services and the advisory committee of senior services and human services separately. Those committees are going to remain separate going forward. We were very fortunate to have, for senior services, Priscilla Vargas and Jeff, I think it's Crumpy? Does anybody know for sure? I don't want to mispronounce somebody's name. And then come forward. And then we had John Scully Jr., Seeley Grace Matsui, and Lauren Frederick come forward. So we're getting these committees back fully staffed and up and running. So I'm, I'm very happy about that. So I just wanted to.
How many are still vacant? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know that we can, last conversation with Bonnie, I think, I think one of them is full, and I think there's another one that has a vacant. and I think there's another one that has a vacancy. There are also some terms that are expiring at the end of the year. So, that's why I don't, I quote you an exact number, but I'd probably be wrong. So, again, we still encourage people to, you know, submit. And I also want to, again, acknowledge all of those folks who volunteer for us as our manager for Parks and Recs know, it takes a lot of people to do all the things that we do here. And I'm always very grateful that we have people that are willing to step up.
May I just add to that? You know, one of the things that we've been pleased in the transition that's taken place in parks and also at the senior services has been ways that we found to provide additional staff to help staff these committees. That was taking the domestic violence advocate, making that into a full FTE, using the point six that we added as a management analyst to support human services. Myself, Susan, Councilmember Buxton have been attending the senior services advisory board. So, I think just as a level of importance for the city, just want to emphasize that we're happy we have those resources to support their work.
With that, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, at this time, I'm going to give the council a five-minute break. We'll say five to eight, knowing how things work. So, at this time, the council will go into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss performance of a public employee under RCW 42.30.1101G. The executive session is expected to last 45 minutes. For those few who are still here, you can keep going. You're welcome to stay. However, no formal action will be taken at the end of the executive session. Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be a regular council meeting on September 27, 2018. We are going into executive session.